And I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Reineke.
Here.
Roet.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Vitale. Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Nine present.
We have a quorum, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Elder Person Reineke.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to public hearings under item D. We have two this evening, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Resolution to repeal and replace the planning department's site landscaping and architectural plan design review guidelines.
I'll turn it over to Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Zach Roeder, the lead planner from the Planning and Zoning Office. Tonight's first public hearing is regarding an update to the design review guidelines. Design review guidelines are the approval criteria that the Plan Commission uses for design review of site landscaping and architectural plans. These guidelines are qualitative statements. They're more flexible than the design standards, which may be found in our typically found in the zoning code. Those are more objective and they're quantitative. Our current design guidelines were adopted back in 1998, so it's been quite some time since they've been updated. After we updated the zoning code, we wanted to comprehensively look at things. We also wanted to update these architectural design review guidelines. These new guidelines will improve our process, making our reviews more consistent and objective, enhancing our communication with the applicants. It also improved design. It'll give us more leverage to good quality projects in the city. The document is structured around a series of goals and objectives with several guidelines designed to support each of those objectives. In the document, we have example images from good practice examples from around our city, different buildings that use good designs, practices and meet those criteria. The guidelines will be used in a variety of different ways for the application. We'll be sharing these on our website and with applicants. The criteria then will be that those, you know, used for our design review. The planning staff will prepare a Plan Commission checklist, which will be included in our staff reports. That's what you see up on the right there. That checklist will then be used by the Plan Commission to assess whether the project meets those guidelines and then they can, you know, base their recommendation off of that. Plan Commission approved this in October and there have been no objections to date.
Thanks for the presentation. Are there any questions from the members of the council? See none. Are there any questions from the members of the audience on our first public hearing? Okay, then we will close public hearing number one, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
2023 City of West Dallas Mayor's Recommended Budget.
While that gets set up, I just want to take a quick minute to give a round of thanks to Rebecca Grill, the city administrator, as well as Jason Kazmerek and Chris Moan in the Finance Department for their assistance and help and thoughts in putting this budget together. It was very much appreciated. It was not an easy budget, not one of, probably not one of the hardest, but nowhere near what I would call easy. So I will turn it over to Jason and Rebecca when they're ready.
Thank you.
I talked really slow.
Are you able to hear me? Okay, thank you. As the mayor mentioned, I'm Rebecca Grill and the city administrator, and Jason Kazmerek is our finance director. We're pleased to present you the recommended budget and action plan for 2023. Just start with a vision and mission statement of the city. We're looking to become the preferred city for visitors, residents and businesses. And we do that through providing cost-effective services, providing for the health, safety and welfare of the community, and taking a creative approach to our service delivery. To go over the demographics of the City of West Dallas, we have a little over 60,000 people. We have 52.3% of our owner, of our housing units are occupied by owners. And the median value is about $148,000, medium household income. It's about 53,000 persons in poverty, 11.2%. And then the number of people over age 65 is a little over 15%. In 2022, the council adopted a new strategic plan focus areas, and there are five that are listed here. Community, destination, financial, infrastructure and organizational excellence. In the Mayor's Recommended Budget, there's two sets of budget priorities to focus on. One is the neighborhood initiatives and the other is public safety resources and strategy. As we go through and explain what's in the budget, we'll get into a little bit more detail. But it has, the neighborhood initiatives have to do with neighborhood associations and making contributions to parks and nuisance abatement. And continued focus on our nuisance abatement program. For the public safety resources, increased funding for the police department, for the expansion of flock camera program, as well as the Exxon product, which provides ability for increased safety and efficiency for officers and administrative staff. Oh, just trying to make a point that we're getting each year, it's getting more and more challenging dealing with the limitations that are placed on us by the state of Wisconsin. I was going to bring like a bough horn or anything, something for everyone, but just, I think some people think we're crying wolf or something. But each year we seem to manage to find something to balance the budget. Last year was very challenging because we had to eliminate positions with people in them. This year we're very lucky because our health insurance increase was zero, as well as we have additional revenues from Medicare reimbursement. But next year, we're unsure what, if anything, we'll have like that. Those are only one-time things. So as you all know, the state funding structure for Wisconsin has over reliance on property taxes. The state aids that were provided for us have remained stagnant for over 20 years. I'll have a slide that shows you exactly what that looks like. Expenditure restraint program and the levy limits are things that are really strangling us and severely restricting our ability to provide high-quality services to the residents in the city. Other challenges we have are the public safety budget growth, our aging infrastructure. You're familiar with our streetlights and then facility repair and maintenance programs. We are competing to keep our high-quality employees, and then we have our taxpayer financial limitations. Now, here's a little, here's a chart to show about the over-reliance on property taxes. At this point, 63% of our general fund budget is reliant upon property taxes, and we don't have any other options to collect revenues.
Just another comment for this, too. The League of Municipalities in Wisconsin is trying, is this on? Sorry, just a comment on this slide, then. The League of Municipalities in Wisconsin is trying to get the state to allow us to have other revenue streams such as a sales tax. They've been unsuccessful so far.
And a little bit more about the state aids. They remain flat. We're expected to get a little over $12 million in 2023, but this is a 0% increase and it doesn't offset the increases we have in the budget. And 18% of our general fund budget is provided by the state aids.
So to put that in perspective a little bit, if they were to just increase state aid by just 2%, which would be a modest increase, we could have doubled the impact that the local tax levy had. So levy limits, as Rebecca was stating, you know, severely restrict the revenues that can come in. We don't have other options, really. So levy limits are designed, it's a limit based on net new construction. Net new construction of new buildings, less demolition of old buildings in the city. This includes activity in tax increment districts as well. The penalty for exceeding the levy limit is a dollar-for-dollar penalty. So to the extent that we go over, the state just lowers our aid until they get recouped the entire amount. Levy limits were enacted in 2005, but back then there was a floor. So net new construction was the percent increase, but if you didn't reach 2%, you could at least have that 2% inflator in the tax levy. Then for a couple of years, it kind of was adjusted between 2% and then almost 4%. But then finally in 2011, they just got rid of the floor completely. And now that levy limit is solely dependent on net new construction. So cities like West Dallas that are fully built out are just naturally going to have a lower net new construction on an annual basis. But communities further out that have open land and constant development, they're going to see much larger net new construction figures. And so that was the revenue restraint that we have to deal with. We also have an expenditure restraint called the Expenditure Restraint Program, or ERP, we'll refer to. This was then designed that if we were able to come up with a revenue stream to support the budget, we still have to comply with a maximum percentage increase in expenditures overall. This is a little bit different. This is tied to CPI, which is typically a lot higher than our net new construction. We receive about $1.6 million per year from the state by keeping our expenditures under the limit. The ERP was established in 1990 as a way to limit spending increases by municipalities. There were some changes a couple of years down the road. And then funding was set at $42 million with 240 towns, villages and cities participating. There was an adjustment in 2003 to increase funding, but that was mostly commensurate with the increase in municipalities that were participating. Since 2003, there hasn't been an increase in this funding level.
This slide has a lot of numbers on it, but it shows from 2001 to 2021, the stagnation of the state aids that we've, that we've had.
So just to break down the categories by column again, we've got shared revenue, expenditure restraint aid, exempt computer aid, municipal service payment, it's kind of like a payment in lieu of taxes for state-owned properties, and transportation aids.
Here, this slide shows the difference of the 20 years. So for each of these categories, we've gone down. The shared revenue is the most significant one. It's over $2 million. We have gone up by $148,000 in the transportation aids. But that doesn't make up for the reductions in the other categories.
And the transportation aids line item will fluctuate from year to year. That completely depends on the amount of construction that actually gets completed in any given year.
And here's just a chart to demonstrate the reduction from 2001 to 2021. Hopefully, we'll be going on upward swing, but I am not sure at this point.
So there was a couple of years that had a significant decrease, but if you look towards the bottom and the end there, you can see that it's remained relatively flat for quite a few years.
Here's the expenditures by department. As you're familiar with, the public safety departments are the majority of our budget. They're almost 60%. And then Public Works comes after that. So a significant portion of the budget is, goes to the safety of the City of West Dallas. We have, the 2023 budget provides for 538 positions, that's down from 544 in 2022. The good thing about this reduction, if there is a good thing, is that no one is in those positions, unlike last year where we actually had to lay off people. This shows a reduction of positions in certain departments. From 2017 to 2023, we've gone down almost 42 positions in the six years. The majority of them are from Public Works. 81% of our budget is salaries and benefits.
This, this slide just summarizes WRS contributions. I think the main thing that I want to point out with WRS for 2023 is that there was a significant increase in the amount that the city has to contribute to public safety. General employees, the increase for 2023 was 0.3%. For the police department, it was a little over 1%. And for fire, it was a little over 1.5%. So those are pretty significant increases just in one year alone.
And the WRS contributions are based on salaries. So as salaries go up, we have to pay a higher percentage, more money into WRS. That includes overtime. Battery went dead. Hello? Okay. So as salaries increase, the WRS contributions increase, and it also includes overtime that we have to pay WRS on.
This is, this is just a slide showing the extent of retiree benefits costs that are included in the budget. You can see that because of the volume of employees that we have in public safety, they have the largest portion of these costs. Starting, the budget started this year with a gap of approximately $1.3 million. That's something we all had to work together to dwindle down. We were only working with a levy increase of $215,000, so that clearly didn't fix the gap. And that's, that's all I got for that slide. Oh, here. To close the gap here, some of the solutions that we had, most of these, other than the levy limit allowance, were one-time solutions. We were able to project significant increase in ambulance charges. The Medicaid rate doubled in 2022, and now that we've seen the impact of that, we were able to budget for increased revenues there. For 2020, for 2022, interest earnings completely dropped. We're starting to see a rebound, and we're able to increase revenues there. And then just as a, you know, this was brought up previously, but parking revenue was increased $25,000. That's commensurate with the additional part-time salaries. It's kind of a wash in the police department. And again, Rebecca mentioned the health insurance. We're estimating a 0% increase for 2023.
And if I can butt forward the items on this slide, we would not be able to have provided a budget that didn't reduce an additional probably 10 or 12 positions. So just, but as Jason mentioned, these are, aside from the levy allowance, these are one-time solutions that will not be available in 2024. Just want to stress this. So this is an important slide to be aware of. These are the position changes that we have in the assessor's office. We've done a lot of reallocating of positions when we need some in a different department. So there's a recommendation to move an administrative position from code enforcement to the assessor's office. And then for code enforcement, that they will, would have that administrative position removed. And then there's also a recommendation to move the zoning administrator position from planning and zoning back to code enforcement. It had been there previously. That will be for a continued focus on the nuisance enforcement activities. The fire, there's deputy chief positions were changed to captains. I mentioned the planning and zoning change. There's an elimination of one administrative position in the police department. This has helped with mitigating the increase for the dispatcher market adjustments. And then Jason mentioned the additional funding for parking enforcement. For Public Works, there are additional recommendations for additional reduction of positions. Also, reallocation of one driver, truck driver position, or one yard attendant to a truck driver position, so it's more flexible. And then these are just the overall highlights of the changes in the, in the budget. Did you want to talk about the change in the maintenance contracts?
So for 2023, we decided to reallocate some of the costs in the IT budget to put them in cost centers that we think are a better fit. So for example, in finance, there's a significant increase in my department because we're taking the financial software that was in IT and putting it in finance. We think that makes more sense. That also happened in other departments. It's not increasing costs, it's just changing where they're allocated. And then also in finance, I'll point out that there was also a flip-flop in the way we're recording utility wages. So part of my salary and some of my staff's salary are allocated to utilities because we work on those throughout the year. In the past, those were directly allocated, and we've switched to grossing those up. So full salaries and benefits are going to show in finance, but on the flip side, there's a revenue coming in the general fund to offset that. So just a change in accounting.
And in the clerk's office, there's an increase to that due to the, excuse me, the movement of the licensing and permitting software.
For the police department, the salary expense includes an estimate for the contract increases. It also reflects a market increase for the dispatcher salaries. Rebecca already talked about the WRS and how, you know, if salaries are going up, the WRS benefits go up commensurate with that. There's also an increase in maintenance contracts that were, again, like I said, transferred from the IT budget. And we've already talked about the additional $25,000 in salaries for the part-time parking. And we also talked about the $25,000 for the flock cameras.
Thank you. And the fire department, there's an estimate for a contractual increase for the pay and benefits. And then when there's an increase for the represented employees, there's also compression pay for the non-represented employees and the command staff. We continue to have three vacant firefighter positions unfunded. And then some of the salaries have been moved to grant funding for the mobile integrated health. And the pension and retiree benefits are the same as the police.
In the health department, I think the main thing that, to point out here is that we're seeing a drop-off in the budget for the COVID funding that was recorded in the 2022 budget. So when you look at health and you see a significant increase there, just keep that in mind, that grant funding coming, coming off.
And the library, they've had a lot of changes, but it was mostly due to the part-time staffing. So in the overall salaries, you'll see a reduction in part-time staff. Staffing, that's quite large, and most of that is coming from the library. Public Works Department, we're having a significant challenge with our trade positions and competing with the private, or the private sector to keep employees. So we've had to do a lot of market adjustments. So there's changes in salary related to that, and then the retiree benefits were moved into their budget. Engineering, there's a decrease in their salary and benefits. A lot of that is because there's been an increased focus on billing their time out to water sanitary sewer and stormwater.
And in promotions, there's a salary increase as a result of funding for a part-time market attendant. And communications is a bit of a change. Communications fund used to be its own completely separate fund, separate from the general operating fund. And starting for 2023, both the expenditures related to that and the revenues have been pulled into the general fund. And this, this here is just a summary of the numbers for the general fund revenues. Again, the majority of this is taxes and state aids.
And this is just highlighting the expenditures by the categories. These are the categories that are set forth by the state, highlighting the increase in the public safety department.
And here, it's fun with numbers, a bunch of historical figures. Couple of things to point out here. The top left, equalized value is up 15%. That normally doesn't happen. That's quite significant. And the upper, upper right is the tax rate for the city, $12.12. At this point, that should be the final rate unless somebody finds an error in a calculation. And then I'm estimating on the bottom left, the overall tax rate of being $28.05. What does this mean for the average home in West Dallas? So based on a home of $150,000, taxes would be $1,800, an increase of $15 over the prior year. So taxpayers will see that. And then I want to point out, then, that's on a tax bill. The budget also includes increases in two of the utilities. The sanitary utility hasn't had an increase since 2018, and that was 20 cents per volume. Where the budget recommends the same thing, 20, additional 20 cents. And that will lead to an increase of approximately $20 per year for the average household. Also recommended is an increase in solid waste charge. If you remember, we signed a new contract for the dumping fees in 2022. They had a significant increase in cost. This cost is simply being passed on to the residents, and the resident will see approximately $30 increase on the annual. Next steps, we did get the final assessment information from the state, and we're able, I was able to calculate that final tax rate. But at this point, you know, we're happy to answer any questions that come up. But otherwise, this budget is going to be up for consideration at the next council meeting on November 15th.
This is just another warning for everyone that our funding structure is unsustainable. And as Jason has mentioned before, we're working with the League and other organizations to highlight this and hopefully get some type of relief for the taxpayers and allow us to continue to provide high-quality services.
And this isn't unique to West Dallas. This is definitely happening to most other communities in Milwaukee County and to quite a few communities across the state. Just looking at, you know, thinking about levy limits and net new construction. If I, I looked at Milwaukee County, and there was only two municipalities in Milwaukee County that had a net new construction above 2.5%. I'm thinking 2.5% is generally CPI, you know, normal inflation. Most communities are unable to increase the tax levy to keep up with normal expenditures.
Thank you. And I just want to thank Jason and his staff again, and all the departments for working together and putting this together. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't have been, it would have been a lot harder if there was not the cooperation and collaboration that we have.
Agreed. Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions from the common council at this point?
Mayor Devine.
Elder Person Keen.
I don't have a question. I more so just have a statement. I'll take a phrase out of Alderman Vitale's book of phrases, because I'm about to repeat. I'll take a phrase out of Alderman Vitale's book of phrases, because I'm about to repeat myself like a parakeet, as I do every two years. But clearly, everyone's just seen this, and there's not one council member up here that wants to see increases in taxes or utilities. Most of the people up here are homeowners. It's impacting us also. Inflation is impacting us also. So we don't sit up here and not have this impact. So please keep that in mind when we consider this budget. And a few items to call out, since 2003, no increase in expenditure restraint. The state has not changed their aid in 20 years. So think about working at a job and not having your wages increased at all. But yet, everything else goes up. What do you do? Last year, we had the hard decisions of laying off employees. Well, if we keep that up, we're not going to have services. We're not going to have effective plowing. We're not going to have leaf collection. We're not going to have the services that make West Dallas great, if you ask me. So I really highly recommend that people reach out to state representatives, because this is a state problem. As you've seen, we cannot maintain this at the rate that we are going. So get out and vote in November. Reach out to your state representatives. There's only so much we can do when you're handcuffed. So I just really, really want to drive that home, that if any council member approves this budget, it's not because we approve taxes going up, it's because we have to have a budget. We have to operate. And concerning the fact that the state of Wisconsin is the seventh highest in the U.S. that is reliant on taxes, again, something has to happen at the state level, or it's never going to change. The state of Wisconsin had how much of a surplus or profit or increase, whatever you want to call it?
Four billion.
Four billion, with a B. What did we see? Nothing. We host the Wisconsin State Fair. We use our DPW. We use our police department. We use our resources. And what do we get? Nothing. So again, this is a state issue. We will try to come up with ideas. We'll try to get fancy, if we can, to not have taxes going up. It's the last thing we want. We don't want to lay off employees. But this just really needs to be driven home that unless something is done at the state level, you're going to have this year after year after year. So.
Thank you very much. Very well said. Any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none from the council, are there any questions from the members of the Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Nichol.
And press the green button for your microphone, please, with the little person on it. There you go.
James Nichol, 813 South 87th. I presented an idea to both mayor, Alderman, excuse me, my two older women, to, that I thought was good, because it didn't cut jobs, it didn't cut services, and it was revenue-positive. And nobody really gave me serious consideration. It's basically about increased parking enforcement. I've got a bit of a problem because I've had sporadic parking enforcement in front of my house, and it's particularly a problem during winter and storms. But that's the genesis of my question to Rebecca. Along those lines, I had asked you, within the last year, whether the expense restraint program, which was, my understanding, was implemented to prevent an increase in property taxes, at least that's how it was told to everybody. Are programs that are, or city services that are funded with that revenue source exempt from ERP? You told me it was. You had to check with your finance director to verify it, then you got back to me, you said that they were exempt.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question, please?
The expenditure restraint program that everybody's been talking about, that hasn't been raised in umpteen years, that limits the amount of money that can be spent on city services, with the presumption that it keeps property taxes down. Now, my question is, I guess I'm looking for confirmation of what Rebecca told me was true about a year ago. I asked if that funding source is, and, you know, let's say you've taken a million dollars in parking fees, and you spent a billion dollars on a DPW garage, whatever, does that, is that exempt from ERP limits?
No.
Can I see proof later? I don't want to see it now, because it's going to take research, but that's not what Rebecca told me a year ago.
We can certainly get you, the DOR, the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, has the instructions for ERP laid out. We could probably get you their website.
Okay, but she got this information from the city, presumably the finance director. Was that you?
I am the finance director. I, sorry, I don't recall the conversation.
Okay. I'll have to refresh your guys' memory. Thank you.
And Mr. Nichol, just to make a mention, you had brought up that no one has taken your complaint seriously.
Right.
After the numerous emails you've sent, Alderman, Grisham, and I, we have laid out more times than not why it wouldn't make sense. I even gave you numbers that your idea would potentially bring $20,000. Even if it doubled, it'd be $40,000. Keep in mind, our budget is 1.3. So while we appreciate the idea, you have been told by older persons, the head of DPW, the police chief, why your idea won't work.
They haven't told me.
So the horse is dead, like it's been beaten.
They haven't told me. They might have told you, but nobody told me, except you guys.
They start in my cap, Jim.
Okay. I'll ask them. We can chat later.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Any other questions on public hearing number two? Okay, then we will close public hearing number two. Thank you again for the presentation, and we will move on to item E, which is citizen participation. This is the opportunity for the council to receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Each speaker must announce their name and address and sign in at the podium. We ask that you limit your comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. We can't take action on topics raised by the speakers, nor can we engage in debate, because the topics you bring up are most likely not on the agenda. Does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? All right, we will close citizen participation, and we will move on to item F. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. However, due to Room 128 being in flux due to the election coming up in one week, the License and Health Committee will be meeting in the council chambers as opposed to Room 128. There are signs on the door that alert you to that change as well. Moving on to item G, the mayor's report. I just have two quick things. One is I want to thank all of the city staff and planners and everyone in the community that made the Halloween event at Honey Creek Park a success. I was not able to attend, unfortunately, but I had gotten quite a bit of positive feedback, and it was well-attended, and it just seemed like it went really well for the first-year event. So I want to thank everybody who pulled that off. And then I just want to remind everybody that early voting is underway throughout the rest of the week. It goes until Friday, November 4th. The November 2nd, 3rd, let me think, today's Tuesday. So Wednesday and Thursday of this week, it goes from 11:30 until 4:30, and then on Friday, it goes from 11:30 until 5 o'clock. And Friday is when early voting ends, so if you want to try to avoid parking and long lines, please consider voting early. That does conclude the mayor's report this evening. We'll move on to item H. Are there any reports from the older persons?
Mayor Devine.
Other person, Grisham.
I just want to acknowledge that great neighborhoods make strong communities. And this past month of October, our neighborhood associations, Conrad Gardens and Rainbow, have been doing an outstanding job working together. And I want to give a public thank you to Danielle and Steve for working with Dana and I, getting these associations together, getting them off the ground, and seeing their success. Our Halloween event was fantastic. We had a Halloween decorating contest. I noted that Rainbow had a scavenger hunt, working together with our residents, the community businesses. It's just doing, it's a wonderful thing. So the kids were fantastic. We did a book giveaway at my home, Read and Treat. And I've done this event for the past several years, where the kids come to my home, I donate books to them. This is through an organization called First Book. The kids love the books more than they like the candy, I think. But I just wanted to thank you all and to acknowledge our community and D3 for the fabulous work they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other older persons' reports? We'll move on to item I.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the common council minutes of October 18th, 2022.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any changes or amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Move on to item J.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
Unless there's any objections from the council, I would move that the item J, the items on the consent agenda, be approved as submitted.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Older person, Ranky. Wrote. Stefanski.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess.[1776.16]